Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you and good evening. Please take your seats. This is the January 27th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. Thank you all for being here. This is without question our favorite type of meeting when we get to honor so many great works going on in the school district and to recognize some people. So, let's dispense with our perfunctory issues as quickly as possible and then I seek a motion to take our agenda a little bit out of order so that we can recognize some folks tonight and then we'll move forward. So, that said, can we have a motion to approve the bills?
Second.
Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion thereon, there being none. All those in favor? Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on January 6th, 2020? And second. Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes from the meeting of January 6th? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to take the agenda out of order to recognize our celebrations first? Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? Motion being made and seconded. All those in favor? Dr. Meyer.
Alright, so we'll start with Clinton Elementary School Student of the Month. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rulo and Ms. Sylvia.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for having us here tonight. Our Student of the Month for January of 2020, honorable, responsible advocate in a role model. These traits are created at home, through outside activities and in school. These traits are the foundational blocks of a leader. The Clinton Elementary School nomination for Student of the Month for January 2020 is Abraham Pizan. Lauren up here. (applause) Abe is a remarkable young man who was selected by the wellness team for being a responsible, positive role model. Abe is a strong leader and a peer advocate. He worked hard academically to accomplish all of his dreams. We are proud to introduce him to all of you. Please don't forget his name because we'll be doing amazing things in his life.
Outstanding.[187.23][187.23](applause)
Don't hide your face though. That's the first rule. Don't hide your face.
Alright, alright.
Hold those for me. Alright, go ahead.
This is starting in fifth and next year.
Yay![211.12][211.12](laughing)
Alright, we have our middle school student of the month.
Good evening, everyone. Lauren here tonight.
Thanks.
I thought Ms. Lauren has recommended along with Peggy Deine, our Student of the Month for January, oh, January, sorry, but Ms. Lauren, she went down back here to read the items, so I guess I'll do it. So, it is with great pleasure to introduce the Student of the Month from Clinton Middle School. This student began at Clinton Middle School only two years ago, which would be fifth grade for him. He came to us from the Dominican Republic. He was shy and didn't speak English. His first few days at CMS were confusing with learning a whole new school and not knowing English. He adapted to the new environment over the next few weeks and as soon as he did, he started to soak up all the knowledge that he could and he hasn't looked back. He has worked very hard over the past two years to quickly acquire the English he needs to work in content classes. To help with closing the language and learning gaps, he had, oh, oh, sorry, that he had, De Oscar attended summer school this past summer and we loved having him come. So, our Student of the Month, our Lunchman of the Month this time is De Oscar Fernandes. Great stuff.[333.12][333.12](applause) So, we could go on and on about De Oscar and his drive to learn new skills and information. He is a sponge in each and every class he attends. However, De Oscar is also a very kind and caring student. He has been extremely, extremely capable with new students coming into our school and we've had quite a few this year who don't speak English. He helps with their schedules, lockers, lunch, their pins for going to purchase lunch and a whole lot more. In two years, he has made many friends because of his kind nature and love of jokes. He probably has inside jokes with half of the seventh grade and some of the teachers. His lover's fool shows through his smile that he has every day and every single day that big smile. As soon as he comes through the building, we know De Oscar is actually a good one, which is very nice. So, we know De Oscar will continue to work hard and work to his potential and we are so happy to advertise him as a student. De Oscar.[406.31][406.31](applause)
Where's that smile?
I know that smile.[409.31][409.31](laughing)
That smile you talked about. He says he's impressed.
Congratulations.
Alright, so that is the Student of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. The Student of the Month for the high school is Ms. Veronica Caradat. And Veronica was nominated by Ms. Laura Peffler. Lauren had this nice write-up and I'd like to read it and we're kind of going to do it with T and F here. Veronica Caradat joined the CHS family in March of 2017. She came from El Salvador when she was 17 years old with another brother and lived with her aunt while her mom and dad remained in El Salvador.
Veronica Caradat is a miel de familia, a CHS persona de dos mil diecisiete. Ella vino de El Salvador cuando tenía diecisiete años con su carnal menor mientras que su madre y su padre permanecieron en El Salvador y ven aquí.
Veronica has worked hard and dedicated herself to education since arriving. She is learning the English language and has progressed in her ESL program and is now an ESL free here at CHS.
Veronica ha trabajado todo este año dedicado a la educación desde su llegada. Ella ha aprendido la inglesa y ha progresado a través del programa que ella está aquí en CHS.
Veronica is a huge support to new students coming to CHS from outside countries. When asked about what she likes about CHS, she says everything. She attends school every day with a smile and is always one to come, welcome new students and show them the ropes at CHS. In her free time, she enjoys music and dancing and she hopes to be part of the women's softball league in Dale Street in the summer.
Veronica es una gran ayudadora para los nuevos estudiantes que vienen a CHS desde el principio. Siempre ella es una persona que quiero encontrar para dar la bienvenida a los estudiantes y mostrarles las esperas en CHS. Cuando usted le pregunta a Veronica qué le gusta más en CHS, ella dice todo. En su tiempo libre le gusta la música y el baile y la espera de un cartel de la Liga de Esporte que se va a ver en Dale Street. Además de trabajar, duro en la escuela, Veronica trabaja 30 horas a la semana en lugar de anunciaros en Málaga. Ella puede ayudar en el promocionamiento así como a la mano de la gente.
In addition to working hard at school, Veronica works three hours a week at a mercantile in Málaga. She's able to help her mom financially by doing this. Veronica's dad passed away last year in February in El Salvador. She's had suffered many heartbreaks since home in the U.S. but she continues to work hard and help others. I'm very proud of her mom, Veronica, and all she continues to accomplish. Veronica, please rise.[630.12][630.12](applause)
Alright, so we actually have two staff members of the month because we didn't get to do celebrations in December because we only had one meeting. Now, a lot of the schools still do their Student of the Month celebrations, but since we only do one staff member a month, we're going to do two this month and to present our first one is Ms. Braverman.
One of our greatest strengths is that we are a small school district and at times our greatest challenge is that we are a small district. You can imagine my ex-girlfriend last spring when I was notified by the lawn and open school psychologist at CES, being on maternity leave during the opening of the school year and would not be returning until December, after the December break. So, I posted for a long-term substitute, the elementary school psychologist position and although there were applicants, go one candidate who made the multiple green wins of the upper and the lower elementary and a building of almost a prime number of children beginning in the eighties or nineties. So, I was at loss. Candidate pulled this long position for a long-term substitute and the second to the one. So, after much thought, I made the decision to approach Lauren Parkinson, the school psychologist at the high school, and requested she assume the role and the responsibilities of the elementary school psychologist chair. I explained the situation and that I wanted to fill the role of the high school psychologist. So, although it's never easy to move out of one's comfort zone in the vast interest of our students, Lauren assumed the role and she did so with a collaborative spirit with focused attention to organizing the elementary case to ensure that the district was in compliance with the federal and state and education regulations. Quickly, Lauren demonstrated the ability to build positive or deep relationships with our new colleagues. With Lauren's technical knowledge base, her collaborative capacity and problem solving skills, she was a hallmark of the CHS. So, it's with great appreciation that she receives this public recognition.[821.12][821.12](applause)
And it is a birthday. It should have wrapped. Alright, one more.
Staff member of the month, we nominated Lauren Hiliger. That's actually myself, Dr. Meyer and John Smith, our athletic trainer. I wrote a little thing here and I have something from John Smith I want to read also. I first met Lauren Hiliger when I was going to physical therapy for my Achilles heel, my Achilles tendon. She was working as a therapist, who was very kind and knowledgeable. The next year, she was hired at CHS in physical education and health. During last year and this year, I've been here well acquainted with Lauren. Most recently, she has passed the test again, a physical education teacher. Having worked on a wellness one or two curriculum along with new physical education courses at CHS. They've done a great job updating our physical education and wellness curriculum. Recently, John Smith, our athletic trainer, sent an email about Lauren as our athletic trainer at home games. I'd like to read it for us now. It said, "I've been able to observe Lauren Hiliger through the fall and winter as our athletic trainer for home games. The comfort she brings to athletes when injuries occur is far beyond what I've experienced as a former coach of a youth school. It is impressive how she takes the time to talk to an athlete about her emotional cliff and calm them by talking quietly home to them and then being on spot when they need to treat their diagnosis. She is quite an asset for the physical education department and athletes here at CHS and we are lucky to have her in great detail." Lauren, if you would join me.[951.12][951.12](applause)
It just came right from her athletic training.
Yeah, now ladies and gentlemen, I don't know how you top that, so we won't try and we have some business to get to. You are certainly welcome to stay, but we will certainly not be offended if you want to move on with your evening. If you do want to take some pictures typically, that can happen outside as well. So, in resuming our agenda where we left it, Sylvia, could we, have you come up?
Good evening, Sylvia. Last week, students at Clinton High had their midterms. The general consensus between the students has been overwhelmingly positive, but the delayed start, kids have been given the choice to either get more sleep or come in early for extra help before their midterms of the day. After their seventh period midterm on Thursday, the faculty decided to let kids relax after a stressful week of exams by allowing them to go to different activities throughout the school. The Start with Hello is a program created by supporters after the tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary School. The goal of the program is to prevent violence through making connections with one another and spreading kindness. Last week, students at the middle school were greeted each day as they arrived at school by Clinton police, Clinton fire, and Clinton High athletes and CMS staff. The Clinton High School Student Council will be hosting a blood drive on March 12th in the CHS gym. Students are able to sign up during lunch and via Student Council Instagram. Community members are able to sign up by emailing gills@clinton.k12 MA.us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Excellent. Anything for the next one.
Good evening. At the last meeting, I said that we were working on a chicken shoot. It's been canceled. We are currently working on a bingo afternoon of the elves on Sunday, March 1st. There's a committee putting this event forward. We are currently looking for gift card donations as prizes. The event will be from two to four and the doors open from 1:00 to 1:30. The PTA will also be facilitating and bringing back the spellathon at CES and also CMS. We want to include fifth and sixth grade. We are also including preschool and the high school preschool. So, we are in the beginning stages of it. It will happen this spring and its main goal is to get equipment for the playgrounds and we're hoping that we'll be able to maybe give a donation to the high school playground to cover, to update any of it here. And the middle school would like to have some picnic tables and other movable outdoor stuff to add to the outdoor time, recess time with the kids. And so, we're combining that. We're trying to figure out exactly how we're going to do that because what we did last time was that we asked businesses to put the words in the storefronts or their windows and then the kids would be looking for their words around town. There would be like word searches, different activities each week. They would get either a lump sum donation or per word correct. So, we're trying to figure out how many words we want to do. But we're thinking fifth and sixth grade would be combined, listing the words just to keep it as condensed as possible. And for the younger grades, we're going to do alphabet, alphabet around town. But it's at the beginning stages, but we hope to have it like within a month's time, one month's time to do it and implement it. So, and then our next PTA meeting is Thursday, February 13th at 6:30 in the CES library. We're still working on the Clintonopoly board game. We have about seven spots to fill and we are, we are in the process of working on that. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 4th in the CES library at 6:30 PM. And our topic for discussion is transition from school to school and grade to grade. We will be discussing specifically the transition from CES to CMS that night. But our, our parents at our last meeting discussed how we would like to brainstorm and talk about transitions throughout the entire school district, grade to grade, and we're going to kind of break it down for the next few months of the school year and we'll work with the special ed department and go to make it implemented and or, you know, discussed in the future to try to make it as smooth a transition as possible. And, I'm sorry, that's it.[1355.12][1355.12](laughing) Bring my...
Thanks so much. Anything from the CTS?
Good evening. I'd like to report that we voted positively. I do mean to accept the memorandum of agreement on the study. So, we're glad to see that that's done. Thank you for all your hard work and coming to an agreement on that. We also had a rich discussion about the proposed calendar and, you know, was it worth starting, you know, a couple days earlier or a week earlier? Somebody brought that to our attention. And although we had a rich discussion about it, it was about 50/50, so we decided to not ask you to write a memorandum and start school earlier. So, we've come to the conclusion that we're okay with the calendar as presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we have, Suzanne Colte, as always, we certainly agree with the decision.
Alright, so to start off with one report, we did have a resignation. Suzanne Colte resigned as a special education teacher at Clinton High School effective January 24th. So, we wish her well in her, in her new endeavors. We were fortunate to be able to fill that position relatively quickly, the long-term sub with a familiar face. Ms. Collins is helping us out, coming out of, stepping out of retirement to come back. So, we're glad to have her, have her back for the rest of the year. So, anyone want to give a FY20 budget update? So, Mark is here. He had two handouts he gave you, I believe.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, fun with numbers. So, what we have in front of you is the FY20 budget with results through '27, with salaries through 1231. One of the things we've been working on, and I had mentioned in school committee before, was that we were trying to get actual results from Harper's so that we could take that and apply it to the budget, so we could do a check and make sure our projections in terms of salaries and where they would have the budget, you know, weren't causing anything untoward or unexpected. So, I was working with Harper's to get a file, to get all the actual payroll that has occurred since the beginning of the school year, applied it against the budget and this is the result. So, as you can see, the salary lines are pretty much where we expect them to be. There's, you know, the budget overall has a couple, couple items that are overspent, many of it are under. You know, we have a total of $1.7 million remaining in the budget and this is now a look at it with the $13 million of salaries uncovered for the balance of the year. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, one of the things we looked at when we were looking at the FY21 budget was that the FY20 budget, when it was put initially in accounting software, was put in with an amount that amounted to very bottom line, the 23.6 million. That included the amount that was expected to be charged to circuit breaker and it wasn't part of the local budget. So, if you notice at the very, very bottom of the budget document, there's a reduction of 744,556 and that will bring the final budget number in the next column to the actual voted budget on top floor. So, the budget we're working with is the voted budget.
I just think there's, so, so Mark's been working hard with Maryland, spending a lot of time going through, just making sure that we're tracking everyone down from the Harper's payroll system to get them into the right account. There's still some things that we need to work on, encumbering, so that 1.7 million is not, you know, it's not just extra money, it's expenses that will occur as we go through the year. Specifically, there's some stipend positions that we need to encumber and some transportation costs that we need to encumber. And a lot of that transportation cost, we haven't been able to fully encumber because a lack of invoicing right now from the transportation company that we're trying to get caught up on. So, once we have more of those actuals, we'll be able to make our encumbrances. I mean, we know what is budgeted based on the bid, but we're going to start, want to start getting the actuals in a better encumbrance in. So, you know, overall, most of the line items, oh, the one other thing too is, there are a few, and I know, sorry, Mark, if I'm, but the, if you look at the grants page, there's not a lot of encumbrances on the grants page yet or expenses charged there. A lot of times what we do is we charge them to the original budget and then we recode them over depending on what they are. So, there's a couple things, for example, in the, in the regular general fund budget, you'll see there's one line item for specialty contracted services, which is substantially over budgeted, it's over by like 116,000. But a lot of that needs to actually be recoded to our 240 grid. So, but it's sort of like it's one big invoice from, from neck and we only recode a portion of it to the, to the grant. So, once we get that coding caught up, it'll be, it'll all be squared away. So, so we're getting there. I think we're getting, I think we're making strides. I think right now the budget projection, you know, Mark and I went through it and it looks, we're tracking, tracking well, but we'll keep, keep trying to continue to update with actuals and encumber and get another report out pretty quickly for the third quarter.
Yeah, we did have, we do have some actuals that are in the grants now. Like for instance, if you look at the SPID IDA totals, there's 188,000 worth of powers there. So, I mean, we don't ever, always put the encumbrances in the, in the grants, but the actual expenses, so those in the title of what teachers are, we have a little more cleaning up to do, but we're trying to get the grants load with expenses as much as possible. And then the other thing I just want to point out, you know, the other side of the coin for that 744,000 that we took out of the budget because it really wasn't local, you can see we put it as a budget amount, circuit breaker, which hasn't been spent yet. So, when you look at the budget total, realize that, you know, as needed, there's still that amount of money that's an expectation that would be spent in circular revenue over the budget. If the budget reaches the point that obviously, you know, we need to expend on it, which is what we want. And so, the circuit breaker was on that year delay, right? So, we anticipate that, that we're going to be hard.
Yeah, so the, the, not only is it on a year delay, but typically we've been budgeting it on a year delay. So, it's almost like a three-year process. You, you, the FY18 claim... You, you, the FY18 claim gets paid out in FY19, which is what we budgeted for FY21, because you have one year to spend that money. So, so that way we know. So we know that we literally got the seven hundred and, thank you, seven hundred and forty-four five fifty-six. That was actually our reimbursement that we received last year that we have to spend this fiscal year. So we will apply that, yeah.
Okay, so it's not based on the projection of circuit breaker money that was yet to come in?
Correct.
That's the cap.
No.
Spent, spent, we'll do the circuit breaker calculation. Usually it's in, it's in April, I think it's due like April thirtieth, and that, we'll get that calculation and that will be the number for FY21.
Sorry, any other questions?
And if you have any particular questions, you can always send it to me offline. If there's a specific line item that you just need clarification on, like I said, I think we're, we're making progress on trying to get this as, hopefully trying to get it all integrated into the system as we can, which is, you know, the, the, the non-salary expenses, I mean, we are doing a great job and that's been keeping up on those and, you know, at any given point, we can get that snapshot and report, you know, Mark can generate a report for, right out of infinite visions there. But it's just making sure we integrate the salary and integrate it correctly, which is another thing, like I said, we're going from, you know, for example, the, the town payroll has one account for nurses, we have to break that into, we have to break that into three different accounts by nurses for each building. Nurses isn't that challenging because there's four of them, but for, you know, for some of the other ones, it gets a little trickier.
Right. Yeah, unfortunately, the only link between one side and the other is somebody's name. So it's become a game of how many ways to spell Michelle.
All right. Any other questions? So basically, if you have questions, send...
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be here in two weeks when we're presenting Budget Version A. Right?
We'll see in two weeks.
All right. Thanks, Mark. The next bullet on there was substitute pay. So I've included a proposal in your, in your packet. This would too, this would increase our sub rates. As you can see, when we tried to look around at neighboring districts, Neshova, Tohonto, West Boylston, and Hudson all basically pay about eighty-five dollars a sub. We were paying seventy-five. And most times we weren't paying anything because usually we can't find people to sub. And a lot of times when, you know, when, you know, when we'll talk to some subs, some subs will sign up for multiple districts and if they don't get a job at a district that's going to pay more, then, then that's where they go. So our proposal basically just, you know, moves the, the rate up ten dollars for the regular subs to eighty-five dollars a day. We also paid an additional, we paid a lower rate for IAs. Most districts, you know, if, if they do, it's still not as low as ours. I'm proposing to keep it as one, one flat rate. Basically, with, when you look at the fact that minimum wage is twelve seventy-five now, it's hard to ask people to come in for a day for, for sixty dollars. So I did share the Fair Labor Standards Act, that I don't think we're in violation of anything. I did, I did double check that with our attorney as far as any minimum wage violations, but I think getting up to eighty-five would, would work. And then basically if we're increasing essentially our daily substitute rate by ten dollars, I also propose increasing the long-term and the nurse rate by ten dollars as well. Like I said, I think we'll have to see exactly, you know, right now, our budget account, when you look at the payroll, we've spent for subs versus like where we are in the year. We're tracking okay with that. So I think that from a financial standpoint, we should be able to absorb this. And part of it is the, you know, and we'll see, it'll be a little bit of an experiment too, because maybe part of the reason we're tracking so low on our pay, on our subs is, on our pay for subs is because, like I said, we have many vacancies that, that don't get filled right now. Which results in, what that results in is that basically just results in us pulling people away, right? So if I have a classroom teacher that I can't get a sub for, now we have to take like a paraprofessional out of a classroom to kind of cover that class. Now that means some kid or a group of kids who needed support aren't getting their support in that class for that day. And that just has like a trickle-down effect. Or, or a lot of times even in like win blocks, when we have a whole system, you know, a team sits down, has a whole system designed of, you know, this is who's going to get these kids, this is who's going to do this intervention, this, and then all of a sudden, you know, we get the bulletin in the morning and it's like, we're canceling win block today because we don't have any bodies, so everything will have to cover, you know.
Steve, how often does that happen again? At what rate? How many subs a day? And how often we not be able to cover?
Um, I would say, I mean, I don't have the exact data for it, so it'd be off the top of my head. I would say at the high school, it's very rare. At the middle school, it happens probably a couple times a week at least. At the elementary school, I'd say almost every day, that there's at least someone that we can't get a, a person for. Now, that person might be, it might be an IA anyway, so it might not have the trickle-down effect, it might just be that the IA is out. But it's, it's very difficult for us to get, to get subs for, for everyone. And that's, and that's the largest, I mean, the high school, the elementary school is the largest faculty, so...
Sure. I was just thinking, and it's a finite demand, right?
Yeah.
So why not go to ninety then? That's an issue. Why not say, let's go to ninety, trump everybody around us, see if we can fill the vacancies and make it potentially a, a better situation for our teachers on a weekly basis because it is to fill it at ninety worse than to not fill it at all. I guess, I believe that's...
And I think we could try that. I mean, and anything is, you know, it's just a matter of tracking the budget, you know?
And I think like with Matt, if we had the ninety for licensed...
Yeah.
It would be just a step above the IA too. I think the license should be a little bit higher than the IA.
So go to, take the regular substitute and change that to a ninety, ninety dollars a day?
I would. I mean, that's, I...
I was, I was thinking some point...
If the money was at all...
Maybe it'll help. Is that, is that five dollars going to make a big difference in the budget law versus the quality of what you can hopefully try to solve for that personnel role?
No, I think, and I think it's worth, and like I said, we'll, we'll track it, you know, as we go through this year. I don't think, I don't think the sub line is going to make or break the budget this year regardless of, except an extra five dollars or ten dollars or fifteen dollars is going to make a big difference. And then we'll just have to see if it, if it change, we'll, we'll have to look and see if our fill rates change, how is that impacting the salary charged to that? And then we can make adjustments for next year as we do budgeting, but...
What's the process? Is there a list? Something like that's going to list you? Does that...
Yeah. So right now there's a list and then we have a subcaller who, who calls each person. We have actually, we've met with a couple companies already looking at potentially going to assist more of an online system. There's a lot of districts that do, do the online systems. And part of the advantage of that is sometimes with those online systems, if someone knows they have, you know, they're going to, they know they're having surgery in April, well, they could put, they could put that vacancy up now, you know, and now, and then that can get, that can get charged where I think with the, not the subcaller couldn't, but the subcaller I think is more focusing on the immediate needs, you know, and, and so, you know, we've, we have got some proposals on, on what that type of software would look like or that system. So we're trying to explore that to see if that might be a, a better avenue. And then the other thing is that there are, you know, it's good and bad, and that's why we're going to address the rates too, because if you try to go to more of an online system, when people set up those accounts, like if you're interested in subbing, you set up an account, if neighboring districts are using similar systems, they're going to basically be able to sign up from their account to any of the districts, right? So they could basically go on and look at what's available and they can sign up. So, you know, the numbers for a lot of the software say it helps with your fill rates, it helps increase your, your applicant pool because of that, because people have the accounts. But, you know, we're still in the exploratory phase of that.
But just to be clear, I don't, you don't have to be licensed to be a substitute teacher.
Right.
Oh.
Right. So for ours, our regular substitutes, that means they're subbing for a, sorry, that's a good point. We're talking about the regular substitute for a teacher, they don't have to be licensed to be a daily teacher, right? So if they're going to be a long-term sub, they're going to go over the class and then we only look for a licensed teacher. But for the most part, they normally have to have, normally look for college degree.
Okay.
So I don't know if you guys, if you still want to try to, you know, if you guys want to accept this, if you want to still make the amendment to make that eighty-five dollars for regular sub to ninety and, and accept it at that, at least try it.
Just a responsibility to get your...
Yeah.
Going up, cents of ten dollars. Seven five. We don't even, not to judge by the... We don't know how hard it is. The reason they're not subbing, you don't know it's because of...
Yep.
And we're in the last half of the year. And those you say is only five bucks and it's already ten, and it gets to a point where that year comes down and you get the money from another, another line item because we didn't budget for this ten initially.
Sure.
I prefer to keep it just as ten.
Just manage that.
If you said at the end of this year, if that time comes, then you can budget it as breaking dollars. I can't do that.
I mean, that's obvious.
No, you're right. I mean, if, so, um, so it's a pleasure to connect. We have a proposal from the superintendent, presumably calculated out. We've had a discussion about raising that proposal. If he's saying that it, it's, it's not going to make a difference to the bottom line, do you want to amend that proposal?
I would make the proposal that we accept it as written with the intention of going forward in the fiscal twenty-one budget at the ninety.
Okay.
And keep it this for this fiscal year.
So all we have to do then is accept the proposal.
Accept the proposal for now, and then what I can do is I can try to give you a follow-up report in maybe a couple months or something that might say, have, what have we seen that's changed, right? So if we look and say, are we seeing better fill rates or what feedback are we getting? And then, and then we can, we can work on, if we want to set the rate again for next year as we're doing the budget process. All right?
Great. So can someone make a motion to accept the superintendent proposal to raise substitute teacher rates?
Someone to...
Second, sorry, second. Motion being made, any further discussion? May be amended on those areas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks. All right. FY21 preliminary budget. Obviously you guys heard a, we talked for forty-five minutes on this already, so I don't need to rehash it. I just like including it as an agenda item so that you can see it. I put some things in your packet. There's the same sheet that was handed out at that meeting that shows you sort of the snapshot of where we are, preliminary figures, also where that, you know, the, the increase in staffing that's being proposed right now that would, would tie directly to the Student Opportunity Act plan. I gave you some other sheets in here. There's the preliminary cherry sheet estimate for Clinton. You can see those veterans benefits took a big, big hit in state aid. But the, no. But you can see it's a little snapshot, this was released by the Division of Local Services. Then there's a couple other sheets in here that I've given you, there are three sheets you can look at, you know, and they're really just more for your, your general knowledge at this point if you have questions, but it just talks about, that's sort of the calculations of how they come up with that chapter seventy funding. So it's broken down sort of by each of those operational expenditures and then each type of learner up there, I guess, each of those categories across the top gets sort of a different foundation amount that, that you, based on your enrollment, it gets figured in. So that is, you know, that's, that shows that. Then we have the, the next page was the town required contribution that kind of just walks you through sort of how they figure out what the town's contribution needs to be. And then the last one just kind of shows our, our, shows a little, you get the little graph, it's like a five-year trend and comparisons to FY21. So it's not, you know, I don't need to walk you through all of those, but it's just sort of some information. If you have any specific questions on what any of those mean, I can, I can answer them for you, but those are, those are just hot off the press. Those were released, those were literally released Thursday, I think, Wednesday, whenever the governor's budget came out. Are there any questions on the preliminary budget or chapter seventy? All right. FY21 programming. So I did mention a lot of this, these programming changes kind of quickly in the presentation at the tri-council meeting, but I think we should formally improve some of those. So, Mr. Sarmak, I don't know if you want to come up and maybe just address the 2021 CHS program studies?
If you take a look at, in your packet, page fifteen, I believe, it starts out with the graduation requirements, it looks something like this. Let me see that guy. It's, it's in the packet, yeah. So I've highlighted a couple of the changes we've made. The other things didn't change in social studies, the heritage class that we're adding, the health and wellness, or wellness and health, two semesters in place of health PE. And then freshman seminar requirement was removed. Those are really the big graduation requirement changes.
Can I just make one side note here? It does say on your agenda that actually graduation requirements are their own separate policy, it's policy IKF. So, and we can catch up on that, we don't have to do it like immediately, we can get you a clean copy of IKF. But if we are going to accept these changes, understand that essentially we're implying that we're going to be willing to, we're going to need to amend policy IKF to reflect these graduation requirement changes. Okay?
Policy...
Yep. But we could look at a clean copy of IKF before, in the next meeting, so we'll bring it to the, to the board if we want. But I just want everyone to realize that, you know, we can't just, we can't just change graduation requirements in the program of studies without then updating our policy to reflect it.
Okay. Any questions on those there? On the graduation requirements changes?
So a new class is, sorry, a new class is heritage?
Yes.
Which is...
We'll be going into that in a moment. I'll tell you all about it.
All right.
And it's not, and just to be clear, the heritage course, just so, the way this is written, it wouldn't be required, but it would fulfill one of your social studies requirements. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So you need three years, but there are, there are four courses listed there, so if you took the heritage, not every student would have to take the heritage, and you'll understand that when you hear about it.
Do you have a question?
Well, I think, was the freshman seminar replaced with the competition or...
No, freshman seminar, not all students take freshman seminar at Clinton High School, so therefore it really can't be considered a graduation requirement if all students aren't taking it. Does that make sense?
But do they need something else that would be required?
No.
It'll, it'll still exist.
It still exists for most of the students.
Oh, it just won't be listed on the...
It's not just a requirement.
That's just the graduation requirements. Okay. On the next page, we go through a few new courses, and there's actually quite a few this year, we put some, some new courses in. It starts out with early college, high school, where students can opt to, they can test, take the actu place or test, test into courses offered by Quinn Segmit Community College, healthier Clinton High School, and taught by Clinton High School teachers. We had two teachers get certified by Quinn Segmit, and they'll be teaching the English and the macro, microeconomics. Any student at Clinton High School could take, test into English one oh one, and that would give them three college credits, they're mass transferable credits through the state of Massachusetts. Any college, university, that's a state college, they'll get credits in. They'll also get ten credits for their junior English. In senior, they take English one oh two, that is state transferable in Massachusetts, all those colleges, and they get, so they get three credits for that and ten high school credits for their senior English. It's only one semester. The courses that go with those are macro and microeconomics, which will also receive three credits for college and ten credits for high school. And all will receive forty high school credits or twelve college credits for the freshman year. And that goes down more, Clinton Community Classroom is right below that, that's revived. It used to be called, I can't remember what it was before, I think it was Clinton Community Classroom, where students will actually be able to, if they have enough credits to graduate, which they like to pursue, they would come to school from so long, say twelve thirty, one o'clock. Instead of having a tutorial at the end of the day, they would leave and go to their job. While they're there, they'd have to keep a journal of what they've done, get it signed off by myself, the liaison for the program, and whoever they're working for, and they would receive five credits and they could go to work every day and get job free.
It used to call that work release back to...
Right, right. It just doesn't sound right.
Work-based learning.
Work-based learning, right. English learner peer mentoring, it's a mentoring course. course for students in the EL classroom where they test out after three years and they can come back and they can stay in the classroom gaining five credits while helping their peers learn the English language. So it's a way to keep them involved. Um, yeah. Moving on, computer science essentials down the bottom on page twenty-five. That is a project lead the way. It's the first high school course into computer programming and that leads the way into principles of technology and/or AP, uh, computer programming. The next page just shows you the micro and macro economics from, um, those are early college Quinn Segmit courses. Uh, the next page is the, yeah. So they, they take the course here and it runs just like, uh, any other high school course. They just get ten credits for it in one semester. Oh, it's an honors course. It's created as an honors course, yeah. The difference between that and an AP course is the AP course you may or may not get credit for if the college accepts it and you have to test and get a three, four, or five, you know, once whatever that college accepts. The, um, college course is here. You, if you pass the class, you get the credits and then for Massachusetts, state transferable. We did the micro, we did the macro. Comp one is on page thirty. That's the Quinn Segmit. And then comp two is the, would be senior English. That's on page thirty-one. Geography concepts on page thirty-six. I'm just skimming through these. If you want to stop me, stop me. On page thirty-nine is CP math four. Um, that came from Quinn Segmit Community College. We took, there's courses that you take sometimes when you go to a college, when you test in or take a placement test for math or English, sometimes you don't make the one-on-one level. So they have these preliminary courses that you actually don't get credit for. We took three preliminary courses, uh, ninety, ninety-five, and ninety-nine. Made it one full year course and it's a course our seniors can take for a fourth year of math that will get them the preliminary, preliminary courses. So they'll be able to test into, um, a one-on-one, half-and-one, half-and-one. On the next page is the physical education. Um, we changed up physical education a little bit. It's no longer called gym or FIZED. There's going to be different types of gym classes, um, team sports, lifetime fitness, and there's one on there.
Weight room.
Weight room, there it is. That way, there's, there's students that like team sports. They want to go out and they want to play basketball. They want to play whatever it is as a team. Other students want to go or go. Some students might want to go out and play tennis or walk the track. That way they have their choice of which style of FIZED they'd like to go into. Um, with that, we have replacing health. We have wellness one and wellness two. Um, I'm very excited about those because in these, we've incorporated in wellness two, students will be certified in CPR. So in that class during the year, they'll get certified in CPR.
Those will be required.
Required courses for graduation. And on way back on the first page, it shows you how we phase out health, phase in wellness one and two. Uh, AP physics C, very exciting. Earth science, AP environmental, and then the heritage courses on page fifty. The heritage course will be a history course taught in Spanish. So it fits those students where Spanish is their first language, or if you have a student who speaks, who's bilingual, speaks English and Spanish very well, they could take this course and learn history in Spanish. Um, the course will basically cover Latin America, Spanish countries, Spanish Indian countries. It'll cover the geography, the cultural and physical, and talk about governments, how the governments compare to our government, to their government across Latin America and Spain. But it's, it's a way to include the, our EL population to take an higher, higher level course to, an honors level course.
And it could also result potentially in, um.
Bilingual state literacy.
Get the, uh, state scale of biliteracy down the road. So that's.
Hopefully we can add courses through the years. Um, French III, new course coming up. We'll bring back our French program. This year we're running French II and our TLC, target learning class. And last but not least, academic instructional support. Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Yep.
If, if within the class that's outlined, it doesn't specifically say this is a senior course or this is a such-and-such level course, does that mean that any grade you take it? Like, I'm looking at the computer applications courses specifically. It doesn't say, listen, missing it, which is always possible, but it doesn't say that you have to be in a specific grade to take like computer science essentials to, to kind of take that to sophomore or junior?
Well, right now it's open to all. If you have, if you have an open elective spot, anybody can take that. But with the, with the project lead the way, they have an order of going. So we're going to do the essentials this year. Hopefully next year do the principles and then work its way into the AP. So it's geared toward a sophomore, junior, senior. But if we have seniors next year that want to take this class, my son will be a junior. He's already talking about taking the class. So there are kids that want to get into the programming and we want to grade for the high schools.
If someone takes all of the ones that offer college credits, how many would they end up with if they passed all?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve.
Just twelve.
So next year we're looking at doing those four. In the future, we want to get, um, bring some science courses.
Yep.
And then they could, the max they'll get, Quinn Segmit's like, like, right now is twelve, but we want to give them, give them some different offerings too. I think this is going to pick up after next year. I think it's, uh, more and more students are going to jump on.
Yeah.
To great opportunity.
Fifteen's a full semester, but it's a full course load. Twelve is getting you, you know, four, for not the price of college courses.
But the English courses you have to test into.
You have to test. You take the actu place or test and we're, we're doing that next, next week. And, um, for the English classes you do is test into. Once you test in English one-on-one, if you pass, you can go to English one-on-two. So you just have to pass it once.
It has, so there is a small cost associated with it, but right now the plan is for us to try to cover it with that Title IV grant so that we can, we just try to, for now, try to make it so it's free.
I think it's incredibly short for, for a small high school, like, for the high schools to leverage the possibilities to, 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 to.
There's a team to put together.
So what is the process that a student takes, um, to decide what they're?
What they want to take?
Like, yeah, like what they want to take each year. Is it solely up to the student? They just need a guidance counselor?
So in the full program of studies, there's actually a, what do you call it, flow chart that shows you what you can do freshman, sophomore, and junior year. And there are some pathways there. If you want to do this, you follow this path. If you want to do this, you follow this path. The guidance counselors, they split the student body right down the middle, A through M, M through C, and they meet with every single student on what they might want to do. Then the student will go home online, choose those courses. Now they have to obviously have an English, a math, and a science. For a freshman year, it's almost all covered for him except a one elective course that he might have. By the time you get to senior year, you have more electives that you can choose. But you have to have certain courses that are followed. For instance, freshman year, every freshman takes introductory physics, sophomore, every, every sophomore takes biology, et cetera.
Well, I, I know in the higher level French classes, I hope that they'll pick up the tradition of carrying on. We used to, each year's.
Talk about going to dinner?
No. No, we had, we had that. It was called, it was called Aura du Savant. And it was a soap opera that you had to, we made an hour-long rendition, like we.
Really?
Wrote and starred and, and it was all in French. And we carried on the story of where the storyline went with each, you know, the.
Each year.
Senior year, yeah. So, I mean, I, I know I did it and when I was there.
It's a reel-to-reel.
And write the next episode. It was a really great.
I will pass that information along. Absolutely. Um, if you don't have any other questions?
Do you want to make, uh, if you guys are okay, probably one of the motions is to accept the program of studies.
Was there motion made? Thank you very much.
Motion being made and seconded free of reservations. Is there any discussion?
Well, I, I guess so. Now, does this mean that we do need to look at that policy IKF?
Yeah. So I'll talk about that in a minute, but we'll clean that up later. Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't think of shit.
Any further discussion? Have you been done on all those in favor?
Thank you.
All right. So right after the, uh, the change document that, uh, Mr. Sarmak was referencing, there is a copy of the current IKF. Uh, you can see it was technically last reviewed in two thousand sixteen, uh, although it still does have sort of like beginning with the class of nineteen ninety-nine at the top and those types of things. So, uh, what I would propose is that essentially we'll just update, now that we've accepted the new program of studies, um, Mary and I will work and update this IKF to reflect the new program of studies and we'll get that to the policy subcommittee for a quick review and get that on the agenda so we can clean it up.
Is it the same amount of credits?
It'll be the same amount of credits for graduation, uh, and they'll have some of the promotion stuff. That'll, that should all be the same. Uh, it's just kind of which courses are required. It's just tweaked a little bit. All right. Um, the next item, uh, just the middle school project lead the way and specials. So the next page you have, it's kind of the sideways one. It's a project lead the way pad, uh, page. It, it outlines their different pathways. So you hear a lot about project lead the way. Um, you know, project lead the way is a very, it's, uh, it's a hands-on course. It's really a, uh, engaging course that lets students really kind of explore. It's got a lot of support backing from like the state level, uh, nationwide. Um, so we've really been using that as a way to kind of, um, you know, increase, uh, some of the offerings for our students, opportunities for our students. So the project lead the way launch course, um, we have, I thought she was here. She's, uh.
She was here.
She was here. So Christine Zentgraf is at the elementary school. She's our STEM teacher. She is a certified, um, lead launch teacher, which means she's able to, uh, she's been trained in it and has, and the way the elementary program works, these are fifteen-hour modules essentially. And as a lead launch teacher, she can actually sort of train any other teacher to, to use them. Um, so she's actually teaching all of our students, I think are getting two, uh, grades one through four are getting two of the computer science units that she's, uh, working in during her STEM, uh, special. And what we've actually done is gone to more of a focus special, um, for the, for some of them in the elementary school where instead of having every single special, instead of having like a giant rotation where it's one day a week, you have like, um, uh, you know, over kind of like three or four rotations, you have, uh, basically like the STEM special all the time, except for days you have gym. So you still go to gym all the time, uh, or health, but you, but you, you instead of rotating the others, you go to the same one. So we can get it focused. So, um, we might look at expanding that to maybe offer some more of the launch courses in like the computer class and those types of things. Um, in grades six to eight, uh, you can see this year we're offering app creators to everyone in grade seven and automation and robotics to everyone in grade eight. Um, the goal is, so design and modeling, I think we're offering to a few sixth graders, but it didn't really quite work out the way we had envisioned. Um, and we really want to offer it to everybody. So the goal next year is to offer design and modeling and computer science for innovators and makers to everyone in grade seven. And, well, the vision long-term is design and modeling, computer science for innovators and makers in grade seven, uh, automation, robotics, app creator in grade eight. Next year, the, those two, for computers probably switch because those kids already had app creator. We're not going to give them the same class twice. Uh, and then you can see how the computer science for innovators and makers and app creator of, and the launch classes that Christine's, uh, teaching all flows into the computer science group there at the high school, starting with the computer science essentials next year, which would feed into principles and then computer science, AI, cybersecurity. And it really kind of walks you along in terms of building with sort of, um, you know, a lot of app creators are using like block coding. And then as you get into computer science essentials and principles, you kind of transition from block coding into more text-based coding. Um, and it just kind of brings it along. But it's a nice, creates sort of a vertical, um, aligned, uh, computer science curriculum there, uh, that is, you know, nationally recognized and hands-on. Yeah, it's a nice pathway. So, thank you. I think that was the word I needed. Uh, so then the next page is just kind of a, you know, the summary of, of what I pretty much just told you, uh, what we have and what we're looking at doing. Um, I don't know that that needs, uh, official motion or anything. I think those are, you know, kind of tweaks to the, to the specials. Uh, the next one, I think does count as, uh, we talk about the kindergarten start time and pre-K options. So these are what I would think would constitute as, sort of the way our policy reads it, if it's a major change, the school committee needs to approve it. So, uh, I think the, the early childhood would constitute a major change. Um, so our theory of action for this is that we can help better prepare students for school and thus increase student achievement by adding an early childhood coordinator focused on outreach, identification, testing, and programming, increasing time on learning for pre-K students, increasing time on learning for kindergarten students to allow for the integration of more social and play-based learning opportunities. Why do I add that second part in there? Because, um, right now our kindergarten comes in forty-five minutes later than everybody else. There's another, there's kind of like the one through four bus ride and then the K bus ride. But at the end of the day, we all go home together, right? So we have the capacity to put everyone on the buses. They all ride together anyway because they all ride together on the way home. It's just on the morning, they're on a different bus. Um, the history of that is sort of out of necessity. Um, it started later because that's when they got kindergarten teachers there prep time. Um, by increasing it, by bringing the kindergarten teacher, by bringing the kindergarten in with the grades one through four, uh, it'll provide more time during the day. Now, I don't, what we want to do with that time is to allow more of the, the social and play-based learning opportunities that we think those kids need. Because the problem we have is we're already addressing all the state standards, right? So when those, those kindergarten students have a pretty intense day right now as it is. So it's almost like we want to expand the day in a way so that we can pace the day better for them, if that makes sense. Um, because we're not going to add more from like a, a math and English standpoint. We're already covering those standards, right? If we're adding more, it's going to be on, you know, purposeful play, how to interact with each other, how to go, you know, an extra recess time or those types of things so that we can kind of almost spread out their, their learning through, uh, a little bit longer during the day. Um, so it's more appropriate. So that's, that's the goal. And I just, I think it's important to understand that is, you know, there are state standards for kindergarten that we're held accountable for, that we're, we're addressing right now in forty-five minutes less than we do with everybody else. Adding those forty-five minutes is, doesn't mean we want forty-five more minutes to do more math and English. It's, we want forty-five more minutes to do kindergarten stuff, you know, and I think that's, that's important. For pre-K, um, we're looking at trying to add the early childhood coordinator position, put that in the preliminary budget. But that would allow us to do, like I mentioned, right now we have, basically have four pre-K teachers at the, if we look at the elementary school, we have four pre-K teachers. Those teachers teach four days a week. They all have one day a week off basically to do testing and meetings and those types of things. Because there's a lot of early identification, a lot of those things that happen with, with, uh, pre-K students. So essentially, if you think about that in a way, it's almost like point eight of a teacher that we're not, not utilizing, um, because we're, we're leaving them to do, do testing and other duties. So if we add, the idea is by adding a coordinator, we gain that kind of point eight of teaching that we can then use. So that would allow us to offer five-day-a-week, uh, pre-K programs instead of the current four-day-a-week. Um, our goal would be to target the four-year-olds for five-day-a-week, still maintaining a three-year-old program for, a three-day program, excuse me, for three-year-olds. And we're also looking at adding a two-day-a-week program, um, that would be, uh, probably reserved more for, what happens is we have students that might, uh, kind of age in as they go through the year, like they turn three. Um, and those are kids that might, might have, they're going to be in pre-K for basically like two and a half years, right? They sort of age in, they turn three, they're going to be with us from the time they turn three till the end of the year. Then next year, they're real, technically they're still in three-year-old program, the four-year-old program, and then they would start kindergarten. So they're going to actually have more than two years of pre-K. Um, so we could start them as they become, as they age in and kind of get identified as needing, uh, special needs. Um, we could start with them at a, you know, in, in that two-day-a-week program, depending on the level of need. I mean, if they need more than that, then they need more than that. It'd be up to the team decision, but it's something we could offer. Um, so really what it does gives us more options. And the goal is to try to have more options and meet the continuum of services. Um, so our, our intention would be to offer these, these offerings to parents because we get their requests. So we put it out there. Our goal is to be, put it out at the end of this week to get the pre-K survey out that would say, you know, do you want to sign up as, as a four-year-old? Uh, for four-year-olds, we're giving parents the option to pick between a five-day-a-week program or a three-day-a-week program. And for three-year-olds, we're giving parents the options to pick for a three-day or a two-day. Uh, the high school program would remain a three-day program. It's primarily for three-year-olds and she uses the other days to actually teach high school kids. That's what that release time is for. Um, so that's kind of our proposal. Yes?
So what percentage, uh, as I understand physical, um, what, what, what percentage of our, um, preschool attendees, um, form the special?
I'm trying to do math in my head right now. It's, it's under fifty percent, but yeah.
So, so our, I just want to be clear for all of us. Our preschool program is a comprehensive extension of our childhood program, any of the education special education program?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, like everything, the, there's a legal requirement that your pre-K program needs to fulfill in terms of providing services for students from age three to kindergarten, basically, who are identified as having special needs. But we also, you know, believe that the earlier we can get students in and start learning, the better. So typically, right now, most of our classes, I think, are around fifteen with usually it's eight. The maximum we end up typically go to would be eight. Role model peers, as we would say, and seven special ed students is usually the max. Normally, when we start the year off, we're not capped at that. And then as kids maybe be identified during the year, we're able to meet those needs.
And do we tuition in some of those kids? Are they all Clinton residents?
They're pretty much all Clinton residents. I think we have, I've tuitioned in, I think we have allowed a couple outside ones in the past. And usually, and that's with the understanding that if we need the slot, then, sorry. But it's usually, you know, the tuition's based on a sliding scale. So there's also considerations for financial need too. So we would be proposing, I didn't include it here, but we're not proposing really a tuition hike, but we did adjust the tuition rates, obviously, so that like if you were paying, and none of the numbers weren't out that pretty, but let's say you were paying, you know, sixteen hundred dollars for a, just to make an easy number, sixteen hundred dollars for a four-day-a-week program, where you're paying basically four hundred dollars a day, right? So now if you're going to go a five-day, it would be two thousand, right? So that's, you know, that's kind of, we just kind of stepped things up and modified it basically that way. Or basically, if you were running a three-day program and I go to a two-day program, we used to basically like two-thirds of that. So, and I think we rounded to like the nearest five or ten dollars or something. So it wasn't really an increase at all. We just kind of adjusted for changes for the, for the tuition.
Any other questions? Would someone have to make an offer to accept the super tax proposals? How many are for education, early childhood education? Most humane. Also, tuition second year, any further discussion?
Is this going to increase the ability to have more children in the program?
We hope so.
Okay.
By offering the three and the two and the five.
Yeah.
Gives us more options. So we hope it works.
Okay, good.
We'll see how the enrollment turns out and what the requests are and how much we can meet needs, but we're hoping so.
So how many teachers are we talking to over pre-K?
Well, there are, there are four at the elementary school that teach the, basically this configuration, right?
Okay.
And there's one at the high school. There's also another pre-K teacher at the, at the elementary school, but that's a, it's a five-day, full-day program for more, mostly special education, for severe special education.
And you think this one early childhood coordinator is going to be able to pick up all the testing that they do on that extra day, you know, the program and testing that they do on that extra day?
Yeah, we think so. The only, we might have, the one part we need to work out is we'll still need to have a teacher at some of the meetings. So we might still need to work on some, some coverage options. But we're looking into that in terms of our IA staffing and those programs. All those classes have an IA and they have a teacher. And sort of, we looked at the number of meetings and said, you know, even if we need to pull some coverage, in the long run, we're going to gain a lot of time on learning, even if that means we need to cover a teacher for an hour here and there to come to a meeting, you know? So as opposed to every Monday off.
So the early childhood coordinator serves a teacher?
Yep. That's the goal.
Any other questions? All those.
Thank you. All right. FY twenty-one calendar. So I think, I'm not asking you to approve this calendar. I might ask you to approve part of this calendar, because I know you're going to want to get some things out there, but I just want to, I want to run something by you. So in terms of the first day, I know that was one of the questions that came up at the last calendar and making sure that we communicate that to the public. I do think at this point, we could say that, basically as Robin updated us with the CTA, based on the, based on our collective bargaining agreements, we'll start with the professional development days on August thirty-first and September first, and the students would start September second. So I think at that point, that's something that, contractually, that's where we need to start. So I think we can approve that and we can make sure that if you wanted to do something to approve that, but now we can let the public know that's when it's going to start. So if they're making summer plans or childcare plans, whatever they're going to need to do, they can, they can plan accordingly. I also think that the other, in terms of the number of days off for vacations and stuff, I think that that's pretty much set. So I believe that it would be fair to say that the last day of school would be projected to be June fifteenth, with the five snow days being June twenty-second. The, the things that are kind of a little bit new to this calendar version is, if you look in January, the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second, there's four days there in that Martin Luther King Day week that are identified as a two-hour delay opening. Now, we did the two-hour delay opening this year for the high school only during that week, right? And that time's up, right? When the high school would need it for mid-year exams. The thought was, could we do a two-year, as part of our family engagement efforts, could we do the two-hour delay opening for those, those days and try to hold more student-led type conferences with teachers on those days at the middle and elementary school? So that we could try to actually invite parents and schedule appointments, invite parents to come into the school with their, with their child and just talk about school. Show, you know, the child could, you know, we'd have a, a protocol for kind of the student-led conference. They'd show some, you know, show some work they're proud of, talk about what they like about school, what's hard for them at school, those types of things. So that we could try to, it'd be, it'd be fulfilling sort of a, a family engagement type strategy by allowing that time. You know, the thought is, the high school's already doing it. So that seemed to go well, got good, good reviews. So we could extend that potentially to allow for this. The same thing on the last days in June, those four days, those are all days that the high school gets out early anyway, right? High school gets out early on those days for final exams. The same thought would be, we could kind of revisit the same sort of conferencing schedule that we did at the mid-year at the end, where we sort of invite families in with their students. And we try to make like a plan for, you know, our summer reading, preparing for next year, all those types of things. That's the goal. That's what this proposal is based on. I totally understand if there's questions and comments on, you know, adding a whole bunch of goofy start days in terms of parents and schedules. That's why I said, not necessarily looking for just a, a stamp of approval on this. We might need to rehash those a little bit, but.
I'd just like to comment, I think the two-hour delay for the high school worked because they're young adults.
Right.
They don't need daycare. As a working parent, a two-hour delay for an entire week would just be hard to cover to, you know, for a working parent, it would just be a wrench thrown right in.
Yep. And then we talked about, so when you kind of felt the idea, we talked about, you know, having some childcare, you know, like, so for example, most of those conferences, right, would take place, most people aren't meeting with, like the specialist teachers, right? They're meeting with like the classroom teachers. So you could potentially have, you know, the cafeteria and the gym like staffed so that students could came, needed to come early. But then I don't really have like the buses running. That means like you'd have to get them there.
Yourself.
Yourself, yeah. So I, I mean, as I'm saying, there are some logistical challenges. This is why I'm throwing it out there.
I think, I think I understand your train of thought.
Yep.
In that if you're going to disrupt a family because they're a high school student potentially be in that situation, you have two kids in the house, right? Probably a good time to knock it off. It's just a question of whether.
I mean, I think at the end of the year, with early releases, the difference is the high school kids are out. So you can, you can call on, you know, you can pick up a babysitter. Yeah, exactly. The two-hour delay, I mean, I know it could be, it could be a challenge. But I just, you know, I, it looked like an opportunity. When we were talking about how, when I thought, you know, this is something that I think we're really trying to come up with, with strategies to increase, you know, deliberate and intentional parent and family engagement. And I think this time would be a key factor.
But how many parents would go if they're working?
Well, I mean, we've had good attendance at our, well, I guess that's a difference. Because we've had, we've had good attendance at our AM events. We ran an AM book scale this year at the, at the elementary school. They did the book fair early in the morning. And there were a ton of parents that came in who appreciated it because they said that they're, they're not able to come to the night events. You know what I mean? Like we had a lot of people. But it was actually before school. So it might have been parents coming in and then dropping their kid off and going to work, right?
You know, I mean, I think there's benefit to creating a calendar that is a year in advance where you can look at those days. I, I would say, through no fault of anyone, it's just a nightmare. One of my biggest frustrations, and I'm sure it's one of the teachers as well, is that there's limited time to talk with teachers and conference and get a sense of the depth and breadth of how our children are doing in the classroom. There's just not a lot of time. So to think out of the box in this way and looking at opportunities, and as I said, you know, full disclosure, huge problems to the community. So as I, you know, when you talk about the importance of, you know, the, the homeschool partnership and to not have the student involved in that process, and that is not a, a, that aside, I think there are ways to figure out the logistics of it. But I, I, I'm strong in favor of community thinking can to give more opportunities and this kind of a dialogue within the schools. And I'm certainly, I mean, with all the self-physical teams and laws that I'm aware of, and, you know, for the process, but in terms of supporting that process for the justice as well.
So like I said, I don't think we need to approve this, this version tonight or even disprove this version tonight. I think it's, it's more, I wanted to have the conversation about it.
I feel more comfortable waiting to the next meeting and being able to talk to members of the community and see what the feeling is out there.
What the feedback is. Yep. And I think that's totally reasonable. It's what I would, it's what I would hope we would do. The, I do think, like I said, the only thing that we could clarify, or whether we vote on it, whether you guys want to vote on it, or whether you just want it to be just sort of known, is that essentially, whether those days are half-days or delayed openings or whatever, that's not going to change the fact that kids will come back on the second. They're scheduled to get out on the fifteenth.
Right.
Twenty-second is a snow day. So we can at least kind of, if you guys are okay with that, you could approve sort of the starting date with the, you know, with the professional development and half-days, like to be determined or something.
So would someone like to make a motion to set the start and tentative on the nineteenth day, uh, uh, for the, for the calendar from the twenty-second to the, everything else is, is the, the.
I'll make that motion, that we start on September second with a potential.
Actually, actually, we'll second for students on the thirty-first.
Yeah.
Right.
Teachers.
And then the fifteenth would be in the last day of school.
By, by the.
Barring snow days.
Yep.
So the half-days that are outlined for the last week of school, both would change if, with the snow days. So in other words, if we ended up going to the twenty-second, the ninth, tenth, eleventh and fourteenth, half-days would actually be the sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth and twenty-first.
Right. We'd probably have to put a note on that, on the calendar, these would be the last five days of school or whatever would be for, you know, anything. So that as those change, those would change as well.
Yeah. Now, the, the two-hour start, the delayed start, would, would the teachers chime in there that they thought that would be the times to meet with the parents or like?
This is a more recent brainstorm that I think we still need to try to get some more feedback. I don't think, we haven't formally, I haven't had a formal conversation with the teachers association about that. So I, like I said, I know we had some success with some of the morning events we ran, although the caveat is those morning events were actually before school even started. And then we did get some good feedback on those. You know, I.
Except you have some type of a early plan.
And our hope would be.
For people who, it does become a.
More like if you came in at an eight-thirty meeting and you brought with your kid, then you could go to the meeting and then, you know, if you needed to leave right after your meeting, you leave and your kid goes to the, to the gym or somewhere. We have a bridge, you know? I think we could, we could try to arrange those things. But it would be, you know, I understand, like I said, I understand that there's, we don't want to just jump into this, right? But I think it was something as, as we were talking about engagement opportunities and talking about really trying to make purposeful engagement with families, this was something that seemed to be an opportunity that we should at least explore. So.
It's good to have a conversation. I may be totally wrong.
Right. I mean, that's what we'll, we'll see how it is. Yeah. So, but I think.
And I also think the coverage is a lot easier to execute. The, the offer for the opt-up table is given parents an opening with participation or kid indication and also give quality time with their teachers, which I'm sure the teachers would like, because it's probably certain parents, they don't get to see it, that they wish they did see it and vice versa. So I think if, if transportation is potentially there and coverage is potentially there, then all that other stuff is non-issue. If it needs to be articulated, it needs to be planned carefully, it needs to be executed well. But if we have that, I think it, I think the opening you're giving to parents is, is really, that's a good one. Yeah, that's really good one.
So you guys, if you need a form to vote to accept.
So unless there's any other discussion on motion on the table, which is the start date being the thirty-first or staff second for students and the one-hundred-and-eightieth day being the fifteenth. Discussion.
Was there a second discussion? Yeah, I mean, we had looked at two options, basically, in discussion with the teachers association of either bringing the students in, bringing the teachers in on the twenty-fourth and the students on the twenty-sixth, or potentially bringing the teachers in on the twenty-seventh and then maybe looking at the students on either the, either the thirty-first or the first. So I mean, I think, I think in reality, I mean, June fifteenth is not terribly late. I mean, that's, you know, and, you know, it still gives us, you know, we haven't had two weeks of snowstorms in a while. So, but, you know, so I, I understand and I appreciate that the, I mean, really, the teachers association was the one that sort of even, you know, we, we had talked about approaching them internally, but they, they initiated approaching us about looking at the schedule out of their own concerns for trying to make sure that they had time to work with students, which, which was admirable. But I think in the end, like, like Robin explained, it just, they, they sort of, their membership did their due diligence and, and just kind of seemed like one of those things where, you know, there's a collective bargaining agreement and that's what it says. You know, if we want, if we want to add language in the next negotiations, that if, on the time, if Labor Day is the eighth, then we get to go two days earlier, then we can negotiate.
The seventh, I guess, couldn't be the eighth.
All right.
Any other questions? And again, motion on the table is to approve the start date and one-hundred-and-eightieth day for the twenty-second. So we'll try to, those are the days.
So we'll try to maybe get something on our website that lets parents know that those are the days and we'll probably say that the, the folk, folk calendar will be coming right within the next month or something like that. So we can try to review it at the next meeting and see where we can.
Thank you.
So the last thing is just a human resource update. And we don't really have a huge one. That posting has closed. I think the total was thirty, fifty or something applicants was all said and done. I know I sent you guys an email that I copied to, you got one from me a while ago, right? You and Joel.
Just saying.
Just letting Mr. Ward know that you were going to be, so on the committee in the scheduled meeting.
Yeah, what I thought.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything since from that. So I'll, I'll try to follow up and see when we get that meeting scheduled. I know it kind of rolled into the holiday weekend and, you know, we just got to, I think, be focused on that. All right.
Thank you. So the curriculum committee met and the bulk of what.
Everything presented today.
What we presented was presented again tonight. What was presented was presented again tonight, in terms of graduation requirements, program studies, some of the, some of the items that, uh, Dr. Meyer spoke on in a budget update, our current course level, so, we don't feel... Anything from the safety of...
We haven't, man, I need to get a meeting going, I, I keep trying to work with, uh, Paul about some stuff, but I think we're just gonna need to set a meeting date, so...
Um, the, uh, curriculum committee?
Yeah, I'm just sorry, I didn't have a chance to read it, but it's like newsletter about...
What's the response?
Opens were...
I remember that, we reviewed all the data at the last meeting, all the clicks and stuff.
Yeah. Contact, contact does have that capability, where we can actually, we can bring some to the next meeting, the actual data, like I said, we, we did look at it.
And I, I remember the thing that was positive was being able to see that the...
The opens.
Well, and that the opens, because we were able to break it down by, we sent, we actually sent out three different mailings, ones in, ones in English, ones in Spanish, ones in Portuguese, to three different groups, and we were able to compare the, like, open rates in each group, and they were very similar, yeah, which, right.
That's great, so you are getting the exposure.
Yeah.
The ones, that's terrific.
It goes to anybody in the community that signs up for it.
It should, you should be getting...
You should be on there. I might be getting that.
Yeah.
It depends on what email.
We only sent it to one email address for each kid, we sent to the, whatever the primary one was.
No, that's commercial.
Oh, yeah, you opted out.
Opted out, and you got to react to it.
But what we're hoping is to reach out to the community, which, the community, you know, school, community information.
And they can, like you said, Tina said, there's a constant contact link right on our webpage, right on the front, that anyone can sign up, and it just asks you for your name, and then you can pick which language you'd like to receive it in.
So we haven't set a February meeting date, but we'll, so, kind of, break more...
And then, if for February tenth, if you could just, you know, make it for that, what are those statistics look like?
We probably, we should be able to get maybe an update comparison of the December and the January, yeah.
Just because of the language, policy, there's policy to...
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion, take requests from the... You're correct, President, same thing.
Well, yeah, right, but, like, conservatives, maybe it won't matter, but I just don't want to cause confusion down the line. With the policy, just, it may come in more as a, not as a... You know, this grant, we're asking this to be a grant, right, and I'd rather just, just vote on this first.
And you wanna take the policy and amend the policy?
No, no.
Well, the policy's already approved, though.
I thought we, I thought this was the final meeting.
No, we already approved it, yeah, so it was adopted, so it's already been adopted, but what we're doing is we're clarifying that the, the request itself was received predating the policy, and in fact, the request was part of what, maybe it was, it's part of what, what triggered, let's look at the policy, right? So, so I think it's very, like we said, I think it's very clear that, that there's no question on timeline, that this request came before we looked at the policy, and like I said, that was part of, you know, when we got the request, we tried to look for a policy, we didn't really have one, and that's what led to the, yep, yep, yep.
So after our meeting on the tenth, we distributed copies of the letter from the Matthew McCarron, asking that we give you consideration to their request, based, I think fairly fed, uh, the fact that we didn't have, uh, a policy in place, so, I hope that I know, had a chance to read the letter, and, uh, if I would like to make a motion to, uh, to move forward their request, uh, as I think, yeah, fairly fed, if we can, if the policy was, uh...
I'll second it.
Motion being made, let's really second it, and, and, um, motion being made, is there any discussion? Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tina.
Yeah, we can follow up the correspondence, just to let them know where they vote, and let them know that they can, we can start working with probably Russ Kraus, that do finalize the installation or whatever they'd like to do.
All right. Speaking of Russ Kraus, anything on the facilities?
No, he was here earlier tonight.
Yeah, he came just in case there were any questions on the Capitol or what we presented or anything there, so, I don't think we have, we haven't had any formal facilities meetings, so...
Steve, do we, do we know this, this...
Uh, I do not know formally, but I would, I'd have to double check on it. I would say that we have not had a town-wide building committee meeting in a long time, and usually that building committee is involved in any project over fifty thousand dollars, so I would be surprised if it had, unless we approved it prior, so I'll, I'll take a follow-up.
I just think the, the committee, it'd be good to get that, like...
Done.
Done, because we're heading up on town meeting now.
Yep.
And I don't think we want that as an outstanding execute, to say nothing.
But it'd be good to have that, but, or at least in process by the time that's due, yeah.
It's irresponsible action, in terms of, it's necessary.
Yep.
Getting it, during vacation, as an example, if kids are out of school.
Yep. Then we have the negotiations, so the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the...
So we do have the CTA stipend agreement is in here, like I said, most of it was just kinda clarifying some things, and creating a new structure. Some of the, some of the, there was, there's, I think, some minor increases to things, I wouldn't say they're significant, it was more like kind of rounding some people up to kind of the same level. I think the goal of this MOA is really just to create a more common playing field, maybe, for all of them, so that we have a good structure, and then, instead of really wasn't to get too far, too deep into the weeds in terms of, you know, should this one get more, does this need a raise, or that that should be done at the, at the traditional negotiating table, this is just, you know, this was something to carry over from the last one, so, as Robin reported in her report, that the CTA did approve it, I think I have signed copies, I know I got a folder, I think so.
Um, because Jen Haussen needs to sign it, but she's close to your office.
Yep, yeah, three out of four, that's pretty good. So I have signed copies from the CTA, so if you guys are okay approving the MOA, we can sign it tonight, if you have any other questions, we'd be glad to answer.
So budget-wise, we're all okay as far as any increase that we're seeing in this fiscal year?
Yeah, there's only a couple that are going up this, this fiscal year, and there's a couple positions that are being recognized, and they should be okay, and then the, any other, the FY21 budget actually was already created, anticipating that this would be, so, we use those numbers for the FY21 budget anyway, it's also a lot easier to work with than the other one, so...
Thank you for your partnership, um, with the motion, please, I don't know about...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second. Second, thank you.
Oh, yeah, Tina Shapai Epstein.
Yep, yep, so, uh, motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, so moved, I don't think, you have a question as well, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope, I think you said...
Yeah, it should be four, I'm looking. Perry, did you oppose that? Okay. Sorry, it's so, it's so three-one, yeah. Yep, okay. And it's, it's basically for one year, and we'll be back at the tables, so...
Yeah. Anything on your old business? Anything on your new business? Under chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, in messages to General Law, with the meeting on the commutable entrance to executive session to discuss contract negotiations, the non-union personnel committee will not convene, requires a roll call and vote.
Do you have a good, so I...
Stand adjourned, to the executive session, thanks for your...
Oh, it's beautiful.
Yes?
Where's all my toiletries?
Of course.